All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 19th, 2024 City Council Workshop. We are changing the order. So we're going to do camping site service level first, and then we'll loop back to the rest of the agenda. And I believe that Vanessa and Brian are coming, both on their way, and DJ is absent today. So that leaves everybody else. Yep, we're good.
Okay. Good morning, Council, Mayor. This presentation is just giving you an update on the designated camping sites and some of the service levels that we'll be providing at those sites, and have an opportunity for you to answer any questions. So you will be reviewing and having a discussion of those sites today. Just a couple of caveats for us to be aware of as we move forward with this venture is that there is no legal requirement for us to do specifically any kind of services at these sites. The more sites, plans, and processes and services are in place, the more employee time will be required to manage and maintain those services. That's just something that we'll have to do because we want to make sure that they're managed properly, and we will be collecting data throughout the process and providing updates to you. There is a $5,000 charge per site to reflect the higher risk and activity exposure from city-county insurance services. Additionally, it's important to note that the more improvements, plans, and processes, the more likely there will be a state-created danger. In this regard, the safest path is recommended by insurance is a designated place people are allowed to occupy campsite. The designated place should not be subject to obvious dangers as compared to where they currently are camping, which means we need to make sure that our sites are at least as safe as they are currently right now where they're camping in the park system. Any improvements become a new baseline, and this is important to note, and must be maintained with appropriate staffing. If it can't be staffed for the indefinite future, don't start it. So whatever services that we start is something that we will likely own until another service provider or there's other alternative or options for people to rest in designated places. The following is the level of service recommended at the sites that we've discussed and identified. That would be ADA restrooms at a minimum, one ADA restroom at each site, and I'll go over each site with you here in some additional slides, a handwashing station at each site, and then also garbage service at each site. The following city level of service is not recommended for managing the sites, which was, there was some discussion at our last meeting. One is water, potable water. Staff does not recommend placing a tank onsite for dispersing potable water due to health and safety associated with that. If water is desired as a service, we could potentially look at installing a hose bib at the water treatment site, which is the site that council was originally looking at wanting to establish water. That would cost about $40,000 to $60,000 for us to extend a water line to that site to provide water. We are currently right now coordinating with service providers to gauge interest in a service provider potentially providing water at one of those sites. And again, this would be considered a level of service. So if in six months, when the water treatment plant site location is no longer available and we need to move and close that down and we opt for another site, we would need to look at what our baseline services that we're providing, and those baseline services would need to go with the alternative site to the water treatment plant site. So whatever services we're providing now, we will need to continue to each site that we go to. Legal's recommendation on, another thing that we're not recommending from a service level perspective is legal's recommendation is to not establish vehicle camping. Vehicle camping was discussed briefly. Our code is not created to specifically call out vehicle camping locations and how we've adopted it. Current municipal code does provide compliance tools for us to deal with individuals that are utilizing vehicles to camp. We would operate very similar to Bend. Bend does not call out vehicle camping sites. Bend just provides an opportunity for safe camping program, which we have adopted also a safe camping program. And then also camping and sleeping in a vehicle may occur if vehicles are legally parked. However, no tents or structures can be adhered to the vehicle unless they were designed for that type of purpose. And again, any improvements become a new baseline and must be maintained. Now to go and talk to you a little bit about the sites and what they will look like. The Riverside Park located at 128 Redwood Highway, we would have one ADA porta potty which is designated here in this location. The smaller square is where the garbage would be. We'd have one 2.5-yard dumpster, and service would be, service frequency would be evaluated to make sure that we provide the appropriate service level for that. Two times per day, service will be provided at the ADA porta potty at this location. And then the yellow dots are where fencing will be there, and there'll be some screening of the fencing at the sites. Here is 850 East Park Street. We would have one ADA porta potty. It would be serviced two times a day, evaluate the needs as necessary. And then also the porta potty would be here within the fenced area. The garbage facility would be here in the parking lot just to the south. And frequency again would be evaluated as needed, and the yellow delineates the location. Here's 6 and A Street, which was discussed and adopted in the resolution. Also, we would have one ADA porta potty seen here. We would have one garbage receptacle, 2.5-yard dumpster, and then fencing delineating the Here's the water treatment plant. This is the one site that council is wanting to designate for longer term, longer than 24-hour stay. We would have one porta potty and one standard porta potty, one ADA and one standard, and then also the same level of dumpster with frequency being evaluated. We would have the delineated fencing, and as you can see, we're trying to delineate the fencing away from our stormwater collection. We have some risks there we want to make sure we avoid, and the restroom and the garbage facilities would be located within that fenced area. And then just to highlight a couple of other opportunities that council is potentially considering, and that is the future site for the police station. We are making progress on making that happen. Demolition package is out. The environmental work has been completed. Pre-bid meeting was held at 8:15:24. Bids are due 8:22:24. Project completion, we're looking at the first part of October with some permanent fencing and screening being installed on the south property line here, and then we would delineate the rest with the temporary fencing. And we're looking at that site being able to come online, like I mentioned, sometime 1st of October. And the same services would be provided here where we would have an ADA restroom, we would have garbage facilities, and a washing station. You also have two other potentially identified sites for you to consider, and that southeast I Street. This is fully fenced, graded, and leveled, and would be ready at sometime likely the end of September, along with one or two potential sites at 158 Bonnell Avenue and 124 Minland Call to action, staff is prepared to comply with the recently adopted codes in open camp sites once equipped. As you can see at some of the sites, there already is some fencing up. City will also need to comply with the injunction pertaining to allowable hours of resting in designated park areas so we can go ahead and start enforcing our code if council so desires. We would just need to make sure that we are complying with the injunction also when it comes to the 24-hour notice of camping, which we would not be doing in the evenings in the parks. Alternatives, open the four designated campsites once equipped, modify designated campsites as identified by council, and open once equipped. And costs, there will be a supplemental budget coming to you that will utilize contingency funds to pay for this program. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Aaron. Council, what questions do you have?
So was there any discussion or challenging of the concept of CIS charging us $5,000 per site to reflect quote-unquote "higher risk"? I mean, right now, we have, you know, 17 or 18 sites with homeless people on them, and the CIS attorney recommended that we do 14 sites, and now we're going to have four sites and they want to charge extra. Like, there needs to be discussion about that, and you or someone else needs to represent us on that because that isn't right.
So the difference is that currently, the way the injunction reads is that individuals can rest in public spaces in the park system in general. So the parks are open to everyone, and there are some areas where people can rest in parks. We are not designating that they need to rest there. That is all open for them to rest. The difference is in the code that we've adopted and the manner where we're going is we're, we are, we are calling out now where they can go, and it's exclusive for their use, which is establishing an urban campground-type facility. And with that comes additional risks, and it puts it in a different category. CIS is doing this and making this charge to other cities who have urban campground-type of activities, and it is, it is a different category than just having someone rest in the parks. Therefore, they're charging that rate. Like I mentioned, we're trying to see if we can bring the cost down to see if they put a cap on that. They're, we're the only city that would have four separate sites under city control, and we're seeing if they could cap that at maybe one or two sites, so it'd be maybe a $5,000 or $10,000 fee instead of a $20,000 fee.
I guess I'd just like to clarify that, make it clear to everyone in the room that while Grants Pass may be the only city with four separate sites, it was CIS's own attorney who recommended that we have 14 sites. So I don't want to make it sound as if council has decided on something that is far in excess of what other cities are doing. It's actually, while that may be true, the advice of our attorney was to do far more than what we're doing, quite frankly.
Well, I think the advice of the attorney at the time also was looking at a different model, and that was the model of utilizing public spaces that were open to recreational use. And so that was a, that's why that recommendation was as it was. It changed when we looked at identifying for specific sites and excluding camping from right-of-way and public parks.
Duane, and then Joel?
I've got a couple of questions. First question is, when we were talking about this, why weren't we briefed about this? You didn't say urban campground in the beginning or whatever, and now we're being told that when we made the decision to go this way, really was, we weren't told that it was going to be $5,000, you know what I'm saying, until this last one? So why didn't the attorney not brief us on all this?
So we knew, and we've discussed in sessions, that identifying sites would be a risk that we would take on, and we determined that it would be a manageable risk. There are certain things that were discussed in executive session which I will not go into detail, but my presentation before the resolution and the ordinance was adopted did include this information, which was at council's hands before they adopted those items. So it was, you were aware that, that there was that cost associated with managing these sites.
We were told at the last thing they were, but obviously we can't talk about executive session, but that wasn't talked about then. Secondly, on page slide four, it talks about, down here, these little bullet points, it says "a place." It's not talking about places, so, and see that's not plural, other places.
Which, which one are you on?
Slide four, it says allowable locations for camping, caveats continued, and then it says designated "a place."
Yes, uh-huh.
They're all singular. Is that the recommendation to be singular versus plural?
It's up to council to determine what they believe is objectively reasonable. So I think it's, it's not necessarily number of places, but it's capacity, and trying to make sure that you're providing capacity that will provide an opportunity for those individuals that are currently using the park system under the injunction to have an alternative location as identified by our code, which would be to designate a place or places.
Also, these other cities, do they have water at their sites or no?
It varies based on what the community provides. The majority, there's a lot of cities that are not directly providing the site. They're contracted with nonprofits, and the nonprofits are the ones that are running the sites and/or have the lease on the sites. So it's hard for me to say what each, each community is providing because they're providing different things, and different, different community partners are providing different services.
And then my last question is the car camping. You say it's not recommended, and is Bend, because you have Bend cited here, are they pretty successful in just sticking to their, what they have going? Did you talk to them?
I think the concept of success is something that I can't answer because you will get different answers. I do believe that they have a code that's similar to ours where you have tools in place right now to address certain vehicle camping with our current parking codes and regulations. And the way that our current code has been adopted, it is not adopted to address car camping, but general camping. So that's why it's recommended that we provide an opportunity like Bend and other communities that have not called out car camping, but have called out opportunities for people to rest.
Okay. I have more questions. A little bit, come back to that.
Joel?
I had two questions, Aaron. First is for a city of our size, approximately, what have our neighbors and cities in the state done in terms of number of sites designated? Do they, I've heard it said that most cities designate less than four sites, and some of them only designate one. But, so I had that question. And the second question I had was, you referred to capacity to take care of, of people, unsheltered homeless, that, and have the capacity in your designated areas to do that. Are you aware of anybody in the state of Oregon that has done that? Or are you aware of anybody in the nation that has done that? My, the reason I ask the question is, I don't know of any one community that has done that. Now, when I do the numbers and I look at what we have with point-in-time counts, which are, you know, not the most accurate statistic there ever was, and, and the square footage, we can do that on a mathematical formula, but I'm not sure because it's such a fluid situation that that would always be the case or that that would be the objective. And I don't mind doing that because we can do that very easily with what we got better than the other cities, but I know of no other city that's done that. Are you aware of any?
I think you probably answered your question, your second question, and yourself through that rationalization. On the first part, I have not done or have the data available for you today on the research with regards to what other communities have for number of sites throughout the state of Oregon. And again, it's not just a state of Oregon issue, it's a national issue.
Sure.
And it really is pertaining to, it's, it would be similar to trying to compare, I think, to some degree, one police or fire department or community development department to another one in another community. There are so many different variables that just that, that stark data by itself might not tell the story that you're trying to tell or give you the answers that you're trying to give without much more additional information.
Sure, okay. And you're right, it's, it's interesting that the local government's trying to solve a national problem. Okay, thank you.
Brian?
Why was the agenda switched around today?
Oh, Councilor Yenker had a request to change the agenda.
For what reason?
Does it matter?
It does matter because I was planning on being here for this discussion, and this was third on the agenda today.
Well, it was, and I've honored other people's requests in the past, but he's planning to leave the meeting early today, so I moved it to the beginning.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
Nope.
Valerie?
Yeah, I just had a question because I, I do believe a lot of what we're doing and moving forward with really depends upon a discussion with our nonprofits and the people who do these services to know what they're able service-wise, you know, and capable of providing to. So I do know that we are having a meeting coming up, if I'm not mistaken, here soon, and I do think that that could help us determine in terms of the number of sites that we need because I, like Joel, kind of feel like, I don't think it's really our responsibility. I know there are a lot of nonprofits out there that will help us if we work with them. So I think that might also bear on how many sites we are going to be working with. So I guess that's my question, is will that have a difference, make a difference in the number of sites?
I mean, that's ultimately a decision of council. Again, it's what's objectively reasonable, what, what other community partners might come to the table may change your perspective of what's objectively reasonable based on services that could be provided in partnership with community partners. It also will be monitoring these sites and determining, you know, what the true need is when it comes to available space.
And I think that's what I, what I'm thinking about is if we're paying $5,000 per site for just the insurance of a site, I hate to jump out there with four and then have, not have the ability to function with four. I think I would maybe start small and grow as opposed to jumping out in four different directions. Just my thought.
Is that $5,000 a year?
Yes.
Okay. You all just need to keep in mind the big picture here. We are trying to move people out of our parks, right? And so we are designating other locations where they can go. Let's not lose track of the goal here. Do we have other questions? Duane?
Yeah, I got some questions. My, my question, I forget how to word this. I requested over a week ago, almost two weeks ago, to talk about this parks injunction of schools opening up soon, next week, and the answer was, get is that you can be ready by Wednesday or something this week to enforce that. Is that still the case, that you'll be ready this week to enforce those rules?
Yeah, as, as you may have seen, I sent an email to you first thing this morning. I received some new information from our legal counsel where we will be able to, and we're looking at in the near future, close, buttoning this up, including the injunction and having us operate just solely under our code and ordinance. Legal counsel has made a recommendation that we move forward with enforcing our codes as we have adopted, but also, also making sure that we are respectful and honoring the injunction until it truly is moot, which would mean that we can enforce the code, we can start to ask people to move to the sites that we have designated. But when it comes to the enforcement in the parks, we would not be able to provide notices to them during the resting hours that have been identified in the injunction, which are safer than, for instance, the seven at night to 7:30 in the morning. That would need to be stayed in order to meet the spirit of the injunction, but our codes can't, can be implemented now. The sites we are getting ready to have, and I think they could potentially be operational this week. I look at Jason, he's shaking his head. So yes, this week we could start enforcing and moving individuals and asking people to, to move to those designated sites that you've identified.
Just, so if we said today or whatever, we're going to start Wednesday, Thursday, whatever.
Yes.
That would mean that they could not sleep during the day with a tent up, only at, what is it, seven at night to seven in the morning?
Yes.
So that was the original injunction right there?
Correct.
Only?
So that would provide us the new enforcement tools of our code that we have in place.
That's already legally set up?
We could start doing that this week.
Okay.
Joel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the facts here. In terms of, do we have any idea when the injunction will be lifted by the Ninth Circuit?
Still don't have a timeframe, and I hate to give you something, but I think it's very near. It's, you can see the light at the tunnel, it's going to just require some additional massaging by both sides of the attorneys, and, but we're coming to that agreement. And so it could be a week, it could be two weeks, but it's not the, the 60 to 90 days like we used to be talking. I think it's, it's very near, but I cannot, I do not want to give you a date at this time because I have not received one from legal counsel. But that doesn't, that doesn't inhibit you from enacting your code as you have in place.
Go ahead.
So I just want to re, for people that are listening, they didn't see the email, but I just wanted to make sure that, I'm going to ask you, the other side, the other council that represents Blake or Woodard Johnson agreed that the injunction should go away now. They agreed to that?
Yes.
And there was a ask for $15,000 to pay for fees for their, now I wasn't around during that time, that's to pay for some things that happened in the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. And, but those are the main bases, that they agreed that the injunction shouldn't go away, and it, it's no, not valid anymore?
Yeah, we're basically settling and, and asking both courts to go ahead and make it move.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Joel?
Those last two properties you mentioned, what were their zonings again?
Business park and general commercial.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. I think the question before the council today, I guess, is whether you want to go forward with, with the four locations that we've previously designated and get them, get them set up, as Aaron mentioned, with the fencing and garbage and toilets to, to be ready to go. It sounds like they could be ready to go this week. Rob?
Okay, so to me, I've got to go back and think about why, why we're even choosing four sites. So our Supreme Court attorney, right, Aaron Heisell, at one point said, you know, we had to have 14, or he suggested 14 sites for homeless and said he gets to take back four. And then he suggested seven and, or eight and eight, nine and nine, whatever. And then we talked about how it has to be objectively reasonable, and we've heard that very few other cities do more than one or whatever, right? So my, my question is, is why, why would we do more than? So my, my question is, is why, why would we do more than, more than we have to? So originally, again, our attorney was recommending that we had fourteen sites for the homeless. We decided that that's not what our public wanted, we decided that's not the direction that council wanted to move, and we sort of felt that it seemed like, if I'm reading council right, it seemed like, oh, that would give us a chance to be considered objectively reasonable. But that's only weighing it as compared to what our attorney had recommended. But if we weigh it as compared to what other cities do, it's still way more. So, the question I have is, how do we want to weigh that? Do we want to go with, you know, because our attorney might say that this could possibly in some future date, maybe be considered objectively reasonable, if we have four sites? Or do you want to say, look, this is what's been going on around the state, most places have one or two, that's, would be objectively reasonable for Grants Pass also? Because I think that we're still having some, some goalposts or measuring sticks that go back to a month ago, when our attorney was giving us some, some direction that we ultimately decided was probably excessive. So I have to ask council, why are we going with more than, more than is required? Or what we think would likely be considered objectively reasonable?
Dwayne? Aaron?
Just to help guide that conversation with what Council Pella's talking about, in, in the goalposts, like you mentioned, it's, it's true, their goalpost at fourteen was talking about a totally different system. You're talking about parks and parks. Then we changed things, and we looked at an exclusion area where parks and right-of-way is excluded, but we are now identifying locations where they can go. And so that number thing doesn't really exist. So, as Council Pella was saying, you don't, it's not, it's not quantity, it's, it's, it's capacity, really, to some degree. But it really, just to help with the, the discussion, you really should look at, at a minimum of two sites, and whatever you believe is objectively reasonable. And the reason why I say a minimum of at least two sites, is because there could be an opportunity where one individual may be vacated for conduct from one of the sites, and they, it would be appropriate for them to have another location to go. Or it could be that one individual has a restraining order against another individual, and you only have one site designated? Well, what, what's going to happen there? So, from that perspective, it's, I think council, if you're going to have that discussion about which sites to open, or which ones to provide direction for me to, to take care of, I, I would say two at a minimum. And that was just my comment, Mayor.
Yeah, I have a real quick question, I'll come back to you, Dwayne. Because regarding that idea of the two at a minimum, our ordinance requires people to move every several days, depending on the, which location they're at. How do, how is that going to work? I guess, and maybe the chief, or maybe Aaron wants to answer that, but we, you know, do people need to move to the other site and come back? I mean, do they, what's the requirement here? Because that's an important factor, in how many other places we have for people to go.
The way the ordinance is currently written, and the way we currently operate, once somebody has noticed, they have to leave that area.
For a night?
Yes, for a period of time. There's no, we don't have a carve-out that says six hours, twelve hours, you have to reasonably, a reasonable period of time. Our officers have been managing this for several years, and we haven't been babysitting time limits. So we've just been trying to manage a reasonable application of the injunction, and now this is new, and this will evolve, I would imagine, as well. So we would take everything at a case-by-case basis, and then report that back to the council, as I believe you guys want frequent reports on how things are going. So hopefully that answered your question for you.
It does, it just, yeah, it just occurs to me, if, if we're having people leave the one main site for a period of time, one night, whatever, we need to allow a place somewhere for them to go, so that they're not ending up in completely unwanted spaces, right, in, in people's bushes and doorsteps. Dwayne, go ahead.
To answer Rob's question, and just my view on this today, because we're, a couple of these sites, we can't even, we shouldn't even be talking about, because they're not even ours. So I don't think the conversation's ready for that yet, but, because I would like to have this start this week, because we got schools opening up, we got things going on. We already know that the other side says they agree that the injunction is, is nothing now, which is, it's just a more of a process to get rid of it, and they agreed to all that. I think the water treatment plant is probably the, the best one that needs to be opened right away. And I'd be open to talking about what the second site would be, if that's, if we're going to do two. But I think we need to get moving on this, the people, I don't know if people, the citizens of this city want it done now, and they don't want any more excuses. And we need to start cleaning up our city, so I want to get this moving this week. We got kids going to school, and I don't want to wait until something happens more, or we have any more unrest out there from people saying we're not doing something in the, in the, in the city, so.
Joel?
So what Dwayne's talking about, in planning terms, is just an implementation schedule, which you have, whether you're building a water treatment plant, or, or you're implementing this for your unhoused population. And that could include, the operational plan could include putting the water treatment plant up first, and having the parks adjacent to the schools off limits first. And, and perhaps even doing that immediately, and taking a little bit of risk, and then moving on towards the goal of having two, or three sites for people to go. As far as the property that Dwayne referred to, I, I think that we need to consider it as an option, and it's in business and, and commercial, I believe is what you said, and has less impacts than the other sites on our economy, on our, on our parks. And there is, there is a, an effect of these on other people that aren't homeless, which we've all heard from at various times, and they're, they're passionate also, because they view it as a taking of what is there. And I talked to a barber the other day that's down by Riverside, and his business has dropped off dramatically, and he had a guy come in and threaten him with his life, with, I, I can't remember what kind of instrument it was, and he pulled out a gun on him in front of his customers. So, there is a cost, not just to one segment of our population, but to the whole town that we need to consider.
Vanessa?
I sent an email to council when we first started discussing time, place, and manner, and it outlined five separate cities. I know that this is really narrow information, but out of those five, only three have publicly designated sites. The first is Corvallis, they have three, Tigard has two, and Hillsborough has two. Of course, there's different factors to consider there, like their homeless population size, and the availability of shelter space, but I think with those larger communities being compared to Grants Pass, I think it would be reasonable for us if we wanted to scale back from four to two. And I think I would support the water treatment plant, and Riverside East, not necessarily opposed to the I Street location. And that's where my thoughts are.
Rob?
Well, I think Dwayne makes a good point, there's two properties that we don't own yet, so we, as of this week, we can't even really be discussing them, or recommending them. But the way I, to me, if we end up at some future time, which would be great, with not very many homeless people that need, need a spot, to me, the spot on Seventh Street, next to Public Safety Headquarters, would be the most ideal spot in the city for many reasons. The fact that it's right next to Public Safety Headquarters would make a lot of people who are homeless maybe feel safe by being there. Also, there's not very much residential around there. We, for now, since we don't have that spot, we've been talking about Sixth and A as an interim place. To me, if I was going to choose two this week, I would choose Sixth and A and the water treatment plant. And they would have the least impact, I think, on surrounding residential, and that really should be one of our main concerns. And also, the least impact on our parks, and it would completely get our parks back. So I would, I would go with Sixth and A and the water treatment plant, and Sixth and A transitioning to the Seventh Street spot, when it's available.
Valerie?
I would agree with that, because honestly, if I've heard anything, it does get them out of our parks, or the vicinity of our parks, so we have our places back for the public. We do know, and like I said, you know, can't talk about it, on Wednesday night, we're going to have a discussion about the properties, but I, but I think those other properties will be coming soon. So I think the reality is, is bingo right away, we get the water treatment plant and Sixth and A set up, start enforcing before schools start, and get them out, so we don't have that problem, and then move forward, looking at the other sites as they become available.
Joel?
I think that sounds reasonable also, and, and I would call it an implementation schedule, and it may not be where we finally end up as along the way, but it gives us priorities, and we simplify it. So, so staff knows what we're doing, it's simplified, and then we've identified the priority sites.
Dwayne?
I would be okay with those two locations, and, and start implementing as soon as possible this week, if, like staff said, they can be, and start going back down to the minimum hours that they can be in the parks and stuff, and get them away from the children at the schools, that's my priority right this minute, thank you.
Rick?
I'm also in favor of those two sites. While I'm not real excited about it across from City Hall, it's temporary, and as other properties become available, we will have the opportunity to modify our suggestions. Thank you.
All right, it sounds like we have a majority interest in moving forward with getting the water treatment plant site and Sixth and A moving this week. Any, Aaron? Hang on, Joel, Aaron?
Yeah, based on that, if that's the consensus, Mayor, I think it might be appropriate for us to go ahead. I know it'd be a change to our agenda, but if we did a new resolution, which would be identifying those two sites, if you truly are wanting to take off the other two sites, and not have those as a consideration, we should probably put in, 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 adopt the two sites that you have designated, so we don't have four on, on the resolution.
Joel?
The other thing in terms of an implementation plan is information management, and having talked with several people that are unsheltered homeless, there's a gap in the information flow about where people can go or can't go, and there's a lot of anxiety, not only on their part, but on the citizens' part. And so as we implement this implementation plan, I would encourage us to also have an information plan, and maybe even handouts for the, the police, as they work with people, and, and then obviously with our citizens as well, so people know, know where to go.
So Chief Hensman has been, been working with Mike, our, our information officer, and his crew, and we have handouts that are ready to go, based on council's direction, but we've been pausing, because we wanted to make sure we were solidified with our direction.
All right. I'm not opposed to putting the resolution on the Wednesday agenda, but I'm also, I don't know that we need to rush with that, given that we're not really changing the locations, we're just implementing two of them first, so, either way.
I think the intent is to implement those two, and then substitute for the other two, as, as the property becomes available, and not implement those other two properties. So I would, I would say we need it as a resolution.
I've been overridden by Mr. Joel, so, let's move on. Are we done with this topic? All right, Reed Building is up next.
So we are here again to talk about the Reed Cottage in Riverside Park. I've just got a couple of brief introductory slides for you. I wanted to point out, in the audience today, we have two folks, one George Kramer, who is the consultant who did the site assessment, the building assessment on this in May, and you have his report on the dais in front of you, and he is prepared to kind of walk through some of that. And I guess before he comes up, I did it for any of those that might be new. George has just been a real reliable and longtime partner with the city, and has been very involved with many historic preservation projects, and we, we certainly appreciate the partnership with George. The other one in the audience, we have Ward Warren, the Chair of HBSC, and as you well know, they're the ones who made the motion to preserve the building, so. In terms of background, there's really two main things today, I think, are the goal. One is to have you have continued deliberation about what you ultimately would like to see happen with the building. And then George Kramer's here to talk about the assessment and evaluation report. There are two particular goals, council goals, that this maintains, or that this topic relates to. The original motion from HBSC came at their July thirteenth, twenty-three meeting, and that was to repair and maintain, stop deterioration, and then preserve any opportunity for future use of the building. They also motioned that the city investigate possible uses for the building. You've seen this slide before, I won't go over it, but basically, we started in July of twenty-three, with your discussion about the motions from HBSC, and then this year, in February and April, you've had two, two workshops to discuss this. At the April meeting, you asked for a subject matter expert to go and assess the building, and that's why we have George here today. Quick reminder, on the survey that we did, it was over two hundred and fifteen respondents to the survey that we did back last year. One of the questions put to them was, what would you like to see happen? If you, if, well, the first question was, do you support or not support preservation? And as you can see, we had about three-quarters in favor of saving the building, twenty-five percent for demolition. For those that voted in favor of preservation, there was a number of options they were given, the most popular being the museum and the history center, the least popular with four in favor, or three is, is a cafe. So all the way down the list there was the ratings from that survey. So you have been presented to date with three options, preservation rehabilitation, which would retain the building more or less as it is on the site today. Number two, reconstruction and replication, that would presumably involve a demolition of what's there, but would require a, basically a rebuild of some sort. And then third, third would be a demolition without any kind of rebuild. So there's been a lot of advantages and disadvantages to each of those options, which I didn't include in the presentation today, but we can, we can revisit those if you'd like. So at this point, I think I'll invite George to come up. Again, you have the, his report in front of you, and then I'll end with a couple of slides on the funding piece.
Thank you, Bradley. Could you go back to the survey slide, please?
You bet.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Bradley, for that introduction. I've enjoyed working for the City of Grants Pass on preservation projects for three decades, I think, so it's kind of nice to talk to you all again. I do not intend to go through this report in any detailed way, I trust you've all read it. I will tell you that evaluating the Reed Cottage, it's a small, little wood frame building, and like most small, little wood frame buildings, its problems are relatively surmountable. Little buildings like that, this one suffers from lack of attention, lack of maintenance... It's a well-built structure that needs some care. But really, the number one issue here is, you decide to move forward, the priority statement in this report is, what is the future of this building? Because even if you look at this list of possible uses, every single one of them has implications about what the building would require. You know, from relatively little to quite a lot. Cafe, the lowest priority here, is also the most intensive from a code standpoint and from a cost standpoint. But I think, as I recommend in the report, the city's number one step, if you will, is maybe one you've already taken, but we need to do again, is to figure out what you want to do with it. If there is a use out there and a user that is not the city, or if it is the city, that will drive the work that the building needs, and the cost, of course. If the city chose, for example, to lease the building, there is a different opportunity for how the work would be funded and how the end result would look. The building really has, other than its size, has very little limitation for any reasonable work you would want to do. The historic character is almost entirely in the exterior. The interior has not been treated kindly, and there is not much of value in it, and it would be relatively inexpensive. For example, if it were to become a cafe, to largely gut the interior, put in the infrastructure you need for a cafe, an ADA restroom, a sink, et cetera, you don't have to put in a kitchen, and sort of unify the interior and make it a more attractive spot. Anything you do requires some attention to the building envelope. I kind of, the roof is really bad. If you're going to save the building, it needs a new roof, and some of the other exterior stuff that I talked about. In my world, you can, with a historic building that you don't quite know what to do with, you can do nothing, in which case, a little wood frame building in southwestern Oregon where we get a lot of water will eventually dissolve. That's just what happens to wood that's not taken care of. You can choose to renovate it if you identify a use. You can choose to demolish it, and there'll be a lot of paperwork involved for doing that. It's the oldest standing structure in Riverside Park listed on the National Register. Or you can mothball it. You can protect the envelope, you can secure it, and essentially kick the can down the road, saving the building from any further deterioration. In all situations, it's a, what, 25 by, 25 by 30-foot little wood frame building. It's pretty uncomplicated. None of this, in the scheme of things, is horribly expensive, but really finding what you're going to do with it is the key thing, because you can't renovate it for a use you have not identified. And that's pretty much what I have to say to you. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I know that Ward Warren's going to speak, and Bradley will come back up. When I was called out on this building originally, I was sort of presented with the fact that I was kind of thinking it was collapsing, and I want to assure you, it is not. It is withstanding being ignored, but it will only do that for a while. And that's the end of what I have to say, unless you have questions for me.
Do you have any questions?
Okay.
No questions, thank you.
So in terms of next steps, you heard George mention the importance of identifying a use. That will clearly have an impact in terms of the amount of money that's spent. At this point, there is about $395,000 cash balance in that LB6395, which is our Riverside Park account. The budget for the last few years has identified the, the rebuilding as an option for that money, but there's also the park maintenance shop and Riverside stage as well. And then we do have Urban Renewal Agency funding for the overall park, which at this point has not been allocated. So there's your call to action, those three options still in front of you. George mentioned it isn't just a, you know, a straightaway demolition, there are, there are several steps. We've talked about that before. There does have to be a public hearing at the Historical Building and Sites Commission, and then ORS 358.653 does kick in because it is a publicly owned historic resource. So there are some things that we do have to, to clearly demonstrate, an effort to conserve and/or identify a private partner, so. And in that last piece, if you're open mayor, I think that there may be some additional information that Ward can shed on that.
Questions? Joel?
Well, I was wondering, it's not uncommon when we have the committee chair present that we ask them to speak in terms of representing the committee, and I wonder if we could do that.
Hey, Joel, who's running the meeting?
I'm a counselor, and I'm requesting that.
Okay, but, but you can ask me instead of Rick.
So make a decision, Sarah, and you can decide either way.
Okay. So you're interested in having Ward speak?
Yeah, yeah, as a chairman of the, of the committee, just like we have with the other committees.
Yes, we can, we can do that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Ward, would you like to come and speak? Ward, did you have anything to say on the Reed Building?
Yes, I do, and I, several of you were at the site, and I was there as well to look at the building. And so I knew, based on the reactions, that this was going to be a steep climb, so I've done my homework. And my goal, as always with any project that the Historical Building and Sites Commission takes on, is always to make it a win-win. And I don't know how many of you received an email that I sent out yesterday, early yesterday. I know with the selective filtering, or whatever it is with the emails, that sometimes they don't go through, sometimes they do. But in any case, if you all received it, I don't need to read it. I did give several reasons, benefits, and so forth. I also came prepared, because I know the council always wants to know what's this going to cost, and a lot of times, that information has not been made available to you. I don't know if it was made available to you. I did, I did meet with a city-approved commercial contractor at the site, and like George, they also went through it and had pretty much the same take on it that George and, and I had, and that was that it's, it's pretty surprising the condition this building is in, considering its age and the decades of, of lack of maintenance. So, but anyway, so I did have a, a commercial contractor out there who went through the building, and I did get an estimate from them, which I submitted to staff. I don't know if it ended up in, you know, it's not on the slideshow, but I do have that. If you didn't get that information, the estimate total for repairs was 235,500, and it is an itemized list, including installing a concrete foundation, new roof, new sheet rock, framing repairs, electrical, siding, exterior trim, insulation, and so forth. And that was about a third less than what the city staff's estimate was on what it would take to restore it. So I really believe that we, you know, I know that we have very few publicly owned The percentage of this, three quarters of the public responding to the city's survey, even though the costs were, you know, some costs were included, that there would be, you know, costs to restore it and so forth, and still three fourths of the public said, yes, we think it should be restored. That's a very similar response to years ago for the restoration of the Redwood Empire sign. It was 75% or more, and people were very passionate, and actually, there were over 1,000 responses on that project. So the public is very passionate about it, and the benefits to tourism here, I think, are important, and I, I know that there's no cost to the general fund, there's no cost to the general public on this, and that if it is repaired and restored and leased out to concessionaire, I figured within six to eight years, the, all of the cost of the repairs could be recouped, and then from then on, it would be income to the city for a lease, and I think it'll really also restore public confidence in Riverside Park. You may all know that it was the city's very first art museum. It also was park offices. It was also sort of a public safety substation. They had an office in there. There's enough room for public safety to still have an office in there, if, if everybody thought that was a good idea. And as far as future interest in the property, I contacted two business owners in town here that, one is primarily coffee and snacks type of business, and the other one is actually more of a breakfast, lunch, snacks, desserts kind of thing. Both of them expressed a strong interest in potentially leasing this building as a concessionaire in the future. And there's grant money available, both for restoration purposes, and there's also grant money available for, if the decision was made to, for example, incorporate a museum of sorts in there of either local history, or the history of, of the river and Riverside Park, or incorporate a cultural aspect like maybe some Native American exhibit of, of area tribes. So there's so many different exciting things that could be done with it, and it, in my opinion, it's, the public overwhelmingly supports it without even knowing all of these details, and I don't see any downside, so I would hope that you would all see the benefits of saving and restoring one of the few publicly owned resources that we still have in Grants Pass. Any questions?
Questions for Ward?
Thank you.
Ward, I have a question. You said that the repairs would be about $235,000 and that there's grant funding available. Are you familiar with any projects that have received that level of grant funding for a, for a building restoration?
Well, we don't have that many publicly owned resources, so no, we don't have a lot of experience with getting grants there, and I'm not a grant writer, wish I was, but I'm not. But I, like I said, this is an estimate from a, a local builder that has done lots of work with the city. As far as the grant part of it, I think George and others would know better how to address that than I do.
Yeah, sounds like he wants to come up and answer that question.
Okay.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Things that are on the National Register, especially things that are publicly owned on the National Register, have access to various state pools of money. The State Historic Preservation Office has a grant program. There are local, there are private foundations that, there's, that typically support this kind of work, and over the last three or four bienniums, the state legislature has provided funding. In the last legislative cycle, an exhibit center in Medford got received a half a million dollars from the legislature, and I believe the Oregon Cave Chateau has received money in a similar way. There's probably not a lot of folks who are going to give the City of Grants Pass a quarter of a million dollars, and I don't know, I haven't seen that number, I don't know how accurate it is, and it would depend on what you were doing with it. But there are lots of entities that would assist the city with 25, 30, $50,000 kind of grants to support a building, the renovation of a building like this.
I guess, is that what, is that what you would see, is that if our, if our total project cost was $235,000, that we might expect to receive a grant that was around $25,000?
Actually, I think you could receive several. So you would perhaps get 20,000 from the State Historic Preservation Office, you might get 25 or 10, 15,000 from the Oregon Cultural Trust. There are a couple of foundations in Portland that support historic preservation process, and they would give, you know, 15, 20. And so putting it together, you probably could, on a project like this, with city funds, with grant funds, and then as Ward says, projects like this have a way of attracting public investment. People get excited and they want to do things, donate to it. You could probably cover $100,000 of a quarter million dollar budget through grant and donation. I don't think that's unreasonable, but nobody's going to give you a quarter of a million and say, here, go do that.
Right, it's not going to cover the total cost of the project, right?
They want to see, they want to see the city has some skin in the game, too, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That was my question. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. All right. Discussion on this topic. It seems like we've had a number of discussions on this topic, so it's time to make a decision. Rick, and then Val?
Initially, I was not in favor, even after taking the tour of the building, not doing anything to it because of the condition and the remodel that it would require, but it's interesting to hear the amount of interest other people could have for providing grants and so forth. And the other thing I see, which is a different aspect, is if we do improvements in the park, then the park can improve, and because of the people that will be frequenting that structure, would also provide a different aspect, which enhance our park as well. Thank you.
Valerie?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Rick, because in the beginning, after going through the meeting, and also knowing what our parks had kind of wanted to do with it, I felt the same way. But after the survey and seeing that there was a lot of support and understanding what it possibly could become, and, you know, this last few years has been very difficult at Riverside Park, I think, and it is a gem, I think maybe this might be a good opportunity to move forward and put some money, go out for some grants. I know I became a certified historic something, which also added and allowed us to get grants, too, if I'm not mistaken, through the historic, through the state. So I, I'm in favor of moving forward with it in some way, and making it and keeping it as a historical building.
Rob?
I have a question for Ward. Could you come to the, back to the microphone? So, and I, I realize you're not necessarily an expert in this area, you're not our expert witness or whatever. You are a commercial landlord in town, et cetera, et cetera, so just, and I don't know if there's anyone else in the room that is, what kind of rent do you think that that building would bring in?
What kind of what?
How, how much rent do you think that building would bring in if we, if we found one of these tenants that you had talked about earlier?
I don't, I don't really know. I, you know, all I know is, I mean, if I would have, I guess if I were to know that the grant was like the way that the city wants to finance it, I guess what I was looking at, some of the factors that I looked at, is the fact that one of the other slides showed how much money, I mean, there was, I believe, $350,000 that was supposed to go to replace the Isaac Walton Community Center building that was demolished years ago in the park, and that money was, I guess, kind of reallocated for the stage or something, but, I mean, that slide identified a large amount of money that is available to the park and also through urban renewal, and through, you know, the fact that I contacted business owners that were potentially very, very interested. I mean, I have no doubt that, that somebody would want to lease that as a concessionaire after talking to some business owners, and basically, like I said, I, I'm in that business of, you know, historic buildings and, and leasing them out. you know, historic buildings and leasing them out and so forth, and fixing them up, and I've done that for thirty years or so, and so I have a lot of experience there, and I, I have a pretty good idea of what that property would lease for, and then multiplying that out over a period of years, that's, like I said, even if there was no grant money going into it six to eight years to recoup it. But I don't know as far as how much grant money, if I needed to look at that, I would start talking to people and doing some more.
You might have misunderstood, I, I asked you, how much would it rent for?
Oh, okay.
Because you would use the term six to eight years.
I thought you said how much in grants instead of rent. Rent, I would, I would say that with, if you had, say, a cafe-type, coffee house, snack bar type of operation there, that it should rent for easily a couple thousand dollars a month. And I think that's very, very doable. I mean, most parks of the size of Riverside Park do have some sort of a snack bar or whatever, and, I mean, there's a driveway there that goes into a parking lot. If that was cut over ten feet or something, and there's a window right there, you could have a drive, you know, a drive-through window. And then also, I think the historical aspect of it with photos of Riverside Park and the development of the park and so forth, or a cultural kind of center, then grants would also be available for that, whether, and tourism money also, TLT dollars, I think it would definitely qualify as a tourism facility, and that would also allow money to be put into it. So, there's several sources of funding there available. Anything else? Thank you.
Duane?
Since we're in discussion time, I would just say I'm, I'm for moving forward and seeing what the interest is for the building. Obviously, we would advise that we should find out who, if we're going to renovate it, what it's going to be used for, so we can renovate it for that purpose. So, I would like to know more of who's interested in renovate, you know, using the building and what we're going to use it for. I think that's a bigger discussion. It sounds like we want to keep it, so that's would be, my next thought is figuring out what we're going to use it for, and then applying for grants if that's what we're going to go for. So, I think the next step is see what they're going to use it for. I mean, that's the most obvious, obviously, thing to do.
Joel?
Well, I have a background of places that are historical, like Union Creek Resort, Becky's Storgall, shot on the Illinois River, the Cedar House up by the Oregon Caves, Lookouts that were just recently in the paper, and they rented them to the public. The public really loves those things. They really do, and, and, you know, they're, part of their history. So, I was over at Happy Camp the other day with some friends, and just following up with the Karuk Nation, because they came over and they dedicated the monument we had down by the visitor's center. And I, and met with, tried to meet with, with the chairman, he wasn't available, so I went to their museum and, and talked to them, and they are, they, they love Grants Pass, and they want, and they have a very strong culture, a very strong nation. When I, when I look at the Cow Creek Band of the Umpqua Nation, Sue Schaefer, I think, has passed on, so I'm getting old, but they also have a, a strong interest in preserving history and letting people know about the indigenous people. When I look at the history of running the Rogue River, and Taylor Kane, who lived across the street from me, and, and Wildridge, I got a, I got a video at home when they blew up Blossom Bar so that people could get by the rapids, and, and Zingray Cabin, and all those type of things. And you combine those historical mementos with a commercial enterprise like a snack bar, it's what Judy and I go to when we go visit places. And so, I don't know if you've ever been over to the Sixes, they got a whole, old homestead right there where the mouth of the Sixes, back from the eighteen-sixties, that's been preserved. And it talked about the steam trade going up to Portland, and they would stop off at this cattle ranch and pick up cattle, and, and, and all the way of life was preserved there, and it's in Port Orford. Well, it's not even in Port Orford, it's at the mouth of the Sixes River, and it's world-class. I wouldn't call it a world heritage site, but it's pretty good. So, I, I think that we need to, for a relatively small investment, I think we're going to get a lot of return from this, and we need to do that, and I, and I think we got a lot of partners that are willing to help us.
Rob?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Joel. A lot of good points. So, the way, I guess the way I'm seeing this now is, assuming that George's estimates are ballpark, and we were able to get a hundred thousand dollars in grant money, assuming we've got about a two thousand dollar a month potential rent there, which to me sounds reasonable. I mean, if, if Ward had said three thousand, I would have thought that that might be too high, but two thousand seems pretty reasonable. Then, let's just assume, you know, the figure that we're, that Ward gave us was two hundred thirty-five thousand to rebuild that, let's call it three hundred thousand, because my guess is it's going to be at least that. If his estimate of a month ago or two months ago was two thirty-five, we know how that's going to work. So, it's going to be three hundred thousand dollars, but that would still be about roughly eight years to make up the difference, which would be two hundred thousand, if my math is right, or even ballpark, correct. So, if the place is going to, if it's going to cost us three hundred thousand, if we might be able to get a hundred thousand in grants, leaves us with two hundred thousand that we've got to, we've got to raise. That would be roughly eight years worth of rent, and then after that, we've got a, essentially a building that requires maintenance, but we have an asset in our park. So, it's not a huge amount of money, and we have some sourcing for it and potential use. I'd still like to hear from, like, I guess Duane says, I like to hear from the people who are supposedly interested. I mean, when the rubber meets the road, they may not be quite as interested, but there could be others, though, that, that surface. So, for that, to, to make our money back in eight years, and after that have an asset in our park, as Joel's talking about, I think is probably, is probably the right move.
I guess, is there, are you interested in doing an RFP, or see what people have ideas, I guess, for how to use it? I mean, at this point, we do not have anybody who has come to the city that I'm aware of asking to use the building, right? I mean, have we had any solicitations, gee, we'd love to open a museum in that building in the park? Okay, we have not. So, I guess, what are you asking of staff? Do you want them to develop a plan for renovation of the building and, and start seeking grants? Do you want to seek who is interested in using this building? It's had a bit of media attention.
I, I guess since, as Duane says, we pretty much have to know who might likely going to be the user, as what George was saying also, that we've got to know who's interested in using it before we go really take another step as far as spending any money. I guess we would have to get some kind of level of interest of who, the types of businesses or people that might want to rent it. I guess would probably be our next logical step, if I'm seeing it clearly, because we don't know otherwise what direction we're going to take the renovation. So, I guess we need to know, we, we're in a kind of a build-to-suit situation. When we go to reno it, we've got a, we're essentially building to suit some business. So, we've got to know who might be interested. Now, they can obviously back out, but again, there could be somebody else in the future with a similar business that might be interested. So, I think that would probably be the next step, is to somehow advertise that we're looking for potential, potential tenants down the line for that building. That would be my, my take on it.
Rick?
From a marketing viewpoint, I could see going forward with some type of museum in there with different displays. They might be there for three months, whether it's the local Indians or, or something like that, and then coordinating with cafe of some sort where you would have snacks and beverages. And I think if you come up, and I want to say promote the idea, but to say that's one of the ideas that is being considered, then you might be able to find people willing to come on board and support it. Thank you.
Valerie?
I guess I have a question. I know that anytime you're going to do something, the first thing you have to do is go through and go, and asbestos and that sort of thing. Has there been any of that done on that building at all?
We have not had a formal asbestos survey. It's up to the mayor. Staff has not hired that up.
Ward?
I would just like to add that the people that I talked to at the time were very concerned about the situation in the park, understandably. It's like, do I really want to open a business in the park with, you know? And so, that's why I want, I think that's important for me to put out there, if you're going to, if you're going to put out an RFP, or you're trying to look for interest or whatever. I, I also did not publicize who the people were that I talked to, because it's just kind of like you always keep, you know, if you have somebody interested in the property, you keep it quiet for, so I was doing the same thing. But I do know that the situation in the park needs to be addressed, and people need to know first that, yes, that's being resolved. And that's why I thought, like, maybe a public safety office in the building for a year or two at least, with a sign outside, like it used to have a public safety sign, that that could be very, very helpful in encouraging people to come back to the park, so.
Valerie?
Personally, I think the first thing we have to do is to get the asbestos in that. I mean, if you're going to improve it in any way, you've got to get out there and get that done. So, my advice would be to move forward with that, and I don't think, like I said, I would agree with Ward. You can't go out for an RFP at this point in time when you've got this piece of, this building that's falling to pieces. So, I think that we have to take the risk to say we're willing to put a roof on it and start the process of getting it at least brought back to a level to where somebody can look at it and see. And I would like to think that within the next year, which was probably what it's going to take to get through that process, the parks will get cleaned up, and we will have the ability to, to go out for an RFP and get some idea. I think that the basic is just getting a roof on it, getting the foundation taken care of, making sure you don't have an asbestos problem, and just doing the basic, as George said, you know, the outside of the building is, you know, it's not, you can redo the inside of the building. And I think even if it were to just be a simple cafe with pictures on the wall or whatever, you could bring in food trucks if you needed something bigger. So, I think just having the basic renovation and having that done is the beginning before we go out for an RFP personally.
Vanessa?
I think that this is the ultimate chicken and egg issue, what comes before what? And I think I, I'm struggling with, with maybe the council doing, or the city doing an RFI, and going out to the community and asking what interest would a potential renter have in this building? The city's spending a quarter of a million dollars potentially on renovating it, and then maybe that, you know, perspective, however it was renovated, maybe they back out, or maybe their interest is elsewhere, maybe they find a better opportunity. So, I struggle with that. In reading the Kramer and Company report, each of these uses, the renovation looks entirely different. So, for a community center is going to look entirely different than a cafe, or entirely different than a police and security substation. So, I don't know if an RFI, a request for information, might be the appropriate route, but without some type of investor on board, I struggle with the idea of us completely renovating the building for a, a niche use that, if that, you know, that use maybe has the ability to back out into the future, and then we're kind of just left on the hook for it. So, that's the concern that I have.
Rob?
Yeah, I think Valerie's logic is, is right on, and it goes along with, you know, everything George said also about the roof being really bad, and eventually the building will dissolve if they, we don't put a roof on it. So, if we, if we're going to decide today that any of the, essentially the cases that Ward made for this building, if we're going to, if we're going to go with one of those multiple possibilities, then putting a roof and a foundation on is the smart move. The park is a little bit more cleaned up in the future, the building looks a little cleaner, and then we get a better idea of people's interest at that time, but in the meantime, we would have saved the structure, and it would have gotten some publicity, and then a year or two down the line, some actual, real people that aren't just kicking tires can come to us and say, yeah, I'm interested in renting that place, and then we'll know how to finish off the renovation.
Rick?
Additional input there, if we're looking at doing something with a roof, you want to make sure the roof line stays identical to which it is, and, and given the fact there's various foundations there, and the floor is not the same, I would want to see, before we put any money in the roof, that we've decided on the actual configuration internally and externally of the building. Thank you.
Do, do we want to hear from George again? We're in council discussion. Okay, George, come back up. This is the most unusual situation.
I apologize for inserting myself in your discussion. Thank you for letting me say something. You are exactly right. This is a classic chicken and egg thing, and you are exactly right that we need to know what we do before we do anything. Correcting the asbestos issue, addressing the asbestos issue is an excellent first step. It has to be done no matter what you do with the building, even if you end up demolishing it, and the process of doing that will make it look better, for lack of a better term, on the interior for any future user. I would discourage you from replacing the roof, although it needs it, until you know what's going to happen. Pulling a roof and having access to the interior is a great time for structure and mechanicals and other kinds of things that we have not yet identified for this building. As an interim step, clean the roof. Before winter, there's a lot of vegetative debris on that roof. It's when it gets wet, it's a lot of weight, and it holds water against the shingles. The shingles aren't great, they'll probably survive another year, and then we will know more, and we can deal with the roof then. I apologize.
Thank you for that info. All right, well, it sounds, sounds like council does have some interest in seeing what additional uses are. I personally remain completely unconvinced that the community has strong feelings supporting this building. I have been to Becky's Cafe and the Oregon Cave Chateau, and, you know, all kinds of other historic structures many, many times. My mother ran the Historical Society when I was a child, so historic preservation is important to me. I, I don't know that if I had a hundred and fifty to two or three hundred thousand dollars in this town, that that would be the most important way for me to invest that money. I'd like to hear more from the community on this issue, because I think that, you know, the way the survey was done, you know, people have to make decisions without proper context, and I don't even know if I were to invest two hundred thousand dollars in Riverside Park, that that would be where I would put it personally. But it sounds like you all want to continue, and it sounds like the asbestos issue needs to be dealt with one way or the other, so are, is that a, a next step that we can all agree on? Joel?
Yeah, so I think we need to bring it back at a business meeting and decide what the next step is in terms of construction. I also think it's a paradigm shift, Sarah, because we've been dealing with Riverside Park and its present, present condition for how many years now? Four or five? And I, and I'm responsible for that. We're responsible for that. I take responsibility. And this, this is not only a good investment that'll pay its own way, but it's a statement to the community about what's important and where we're headed with our parks and with our community, and I, and I think that is very important. And being as I'm responsible for the way it is today, which I am, I also have an obligation to go to a different and a better place.
All right, would we... All right. Would we, you guys want something on a business meeting? Do you want to just give staff direction to investigate the asbestos issue, whether there even is one? Rob?
So, taking into account the advice we just got from George, it would seem as though we've got a, the asbestos obviously has gotta be done either way. So, that, that needs to be brought to a business meeting. And I think the only other question, if we wanna take George's advice, is do we wanna essentially clean and preserve the roof in its current state? Do we wanna clean the roof this year? So, we've got two issues. We got asbestos, we got to clean roof. And that would be what we could bring to a meeting, right?
I don't know if that needs to be done at a, a business meeting.
So, no, we just need to know if we're gonna be looking at demolishing the building or if we're gonna look at keeping the building. If we're gonna look at keeping the building, we'll go ahead and do the, the small amount of asbestos work that may be needed. We can clean the roof off and sort of button it down as best we can for the winter. And, and then through the process of additional public engagement, council can, along with staff, can help identify potential uses to give us more direction on how we may go about refurbishing this structure.
Is that what you want for today? Move forward on asbestos and cleaning the roof?
Well, what Aaron just said, right, excuse me, sorry. What Aaron just said was he wanted some direction as to what we're, what our future plans were, if we're gonna keep the building. We haven't, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily decided that. We decided that, or from what I'm hearing, we decided that asbestos has to be done either way. And then the question is, do we wanna put a basically small investment in the roof right now without knowing whether or not the building has a future for the city or not? That's what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah. Well, the asbestos in the roof stuff, that's just, that's something we'll be able to do. That's not a, that's not a big issue. We have budget for it. So, we'll just continue to do that. The only thing we would lose is the, the, just cleaning the roof up a little bit if, if you decided not to keep the building. But that's not, that's not a big deal.
Yeah. I think we have consensus on doing that today. I guess in, in the bigger picture, everybody, we have met about this building a number of times, and we're spinning our wheels on it. Nobody wants to make a decision to pull the plug. And we still don't have a, a solid plan for what could be done or giving staff firm direction to, to move forward on something. I don't know. I guess, you know, one of the things that happens when you come up with a plan that nobody's asking for, and this is kinda where we're at on the, say, parking with the homeless situation, is that we, we establish the program that nobody is wanting to use, right? And so, it's just sitting there more than a year later with, with nobody using that. And right now, we have this situation with this building. I'm gonna guess, we're not interested in running a cafe. We're not interested in opening a city museum. So, it does have, as many buildings do, potential. It's just whether you wanna invest in it. And if that's where you want to spend some money and time, then that's, you know, that could be a priority for the city. But we're, we're neither prioritizing it nor taking it off the list. And that's, here we are again. Joel?
So, let me clarify it for you. Yes. We, we need to take care of the asbestos. I'm from Missouri. I can't talk. And we need to clean the roof. In the meantime, then, we need to do a marketing study. You know, the Historic Commission could probably do that. In the Forest Service, you would have your, your rec staff do some informal work like that and bring it back to the Forest Leadership Team. That would provide a better group. But Sarah, the answer is yes.
Well, I, when are we gonna do it? You know, let's, we, we're having this meeting today. We've carved out a time.
So, right now, what we can do is, is give direction to the staff to go ahead and, and do the asbestos abatement and clean the roof. I think, I think that's clear. And then over the course of the next three months, five months, we decide who's gonna do the marketing outreach. We do it in an organized fashion to make our parks even better and our economic, oh, what, what was the economic, the River Corridor was part of the emphasis of our economics for our town. So, that we need to probably engage with the economic part of our, our committees as well and, and do an outreach. There's also already been an informal outreach. But I know if I outreach to the Cow Creeks or the Karooks and I outreach to some, and we got them all together in the same room, and I outreach to some local business people, it would be a, a, a good outcome. So, we need, we need to facilitate that. But we're not gonna do that next month. And I don't wanna tie up city resources to do that next month. We need to do it over the course of six to, to 12 months. And it's very clear to me. It's been done many times by other agencies, and it's very worthwhile. So, I don't know what else you need.
Rob?
Yeah. Well, I think that, Sarah, for you to characterize essentially us juggling balls in the air and not having idea what we're doing, I don't think is, which is the paraphrase that I'm, that's the meaning I got from what your last statement. And I don't think that's fair at all because today, we got more information from Mr. Kramer. We decided to pay him for that information. So, now we're gonna actually take that information into consideration as we do our next step. It's not due to any lack of will on the council's part or indecisiveness. There was at least four, I believe, four counselors right now of the ones that are here that actually were willing to move forward with the direction. You were the only one in the room who was not, from what I can gather from your statements. So, don't please put that on me or the other counselors. So, you know, I was suggesting, and I agree with Valerie about the roof and so forth, and then George brought up the fact, we can't really do that until we have an idea of what might go in there. So, there is a step, there is a sequence of things based on the new information we got today. It's not as if we're backtracking. It's not as if we're afraid to make a move. We got more information today that we would take into consideration as we move forward. So, as we move forward, what we heard today is asbestos makes sense because it's gotta go either way. I believe the small amount that's invested in the roof to keep it from degrading further also makes sense. And then at some point, before we go, the next step, we would have to have some indication. Now, you seem to indicate that you wanted to have more information from the public. So, you're the one who needs more. That's okay. We can do that. We can accommodate you. But we can, we'll do that in the future.
I would like you to identify a next step rather than have this same meeting over again for another time. So...
The next step is the asbestos and the roof. And until we actually get that together and then get more information, we won't know what we're gonna do when we go to replace the roof. So, that's down the line. And I don't see that that's really a confusing issue right now. It seems pretty well set out from what we heard today.
All right. Valerie?
You know, I'm just gonna say, I said, and I did say that I changed my mind, as did Rick, saying that we're willing to move forward with it as we weren't earlier. So, to me, that puts at least four of us right now saying, let's move forward. And I would say the next step would be to come back after we've done the roof and the asbestos and say, okay, now, now that we've done that, what is the purpose of the building? To bring it forward at a workshop.
I guess I just wonder, why do we need to do that step in order to have the discussion about what your next step is going to be to determine a use for the building? Nobody has any ideas today about how to determine what we wanna do with this building. And so, we're going to have to have another meeting about it. And we've had several meetings about that just in the past year or so. And it's just, it feels like lack of decision, you know? I mean, if we either have a use for the building or we don't, or if we need more information, if we wanna assess the public interest in the building, let's do that. But otherwise, we, I totally agree. We need to deal with the asbestos. Cleaning the roof is a very minor expense. We can do that. But we're gonna have to have this whole meeting over again to talk about what our next step is going to be for determining interest or use in this building. And, and I guess I would just like to see us make a decision today. So, what's not gonna happen, I get it. We'll move on. Next topic, create a police and fire advocacy group. Aaron, thanks to Ward and George for being here today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I have a presentation here about a public safety advisory committee. This is an opportunity for council to discuss their desire to facilitate a community public safety advisory committee and form one if they so desire. I, my presentation is basically based on information I received from Counselor Lovelace and some information that she gathered through some meetings that she's had with some community members. The history grassroots community group has come together after the passage of our public safety fee and food tax discussion. We were talking about funding solutions for public safety. Some members wanted to continue the discussion so they could have a better understanding of how to move forward. The focus group that has been put together is trying to look at resources available in our community and how to educate themselves and the public moving forward. And they're proposing the concept of a public safety advisory committee to continue discussions of funding public safety. Why the proposal? There's a few points here that the group has come up with. Provides additional focus on topic, additional consistency with committee members having three-year terms. So, what they're saying is there's always gonna be a focus group that will be talking about public safety. Simplify data from the public and help get information out. So, they would like to be utilized as a tool to get information out to the public, to help clarify the needs and future needs of the public safety and police and fire divisions, departments, messaging. And currently, there is a Parks Tree Backways. We have a number of different advisory committees, and they think it would be beneficial to have one for public safety. When I am speaking public safety, I am speaking police and fire and the support services associated with that. They've come up with an objective of the public safety advisory committee that is to advise council on matters pertaining to funding, budgeting, facilities, strategic planning to enhance the safety of our community. The committee would help to facilitate communication between the public and the city. It's not the intent that this would be an oversight group or it'd be involved in day-to-day operations and decisions of the public safety departments. The committee is also not act as a complaint or conflict resolution group. It is there more for interaction between the public and council and the community when it comes to informing the community on public safety issues. They've got a proposed committee makeup. That's a budget committee member, a chamber member, business, nonprofit rep, downtown member, two at large, a police and fire liaison, and a council liaison that would all serve three different, three-year terms. This is at council, at council's discretion, and there's some alternatives for you.
Thanks, Aaron. Council, do you have any questions? Rob?
So, Aaron, I think I just heard you say, you used the word "they" a couple times. They have a proposed makeup. They, they, who is "they"?
So, that's a great question. Well, I think most, the majority of these questions, Mayor, probably would need to go to Valerie because I just put the information together and received it from Valerie. So, she's really been the one that steered that. So, that'd be a great question of, of Counsel.
I mean, usually, when the city has a committee or a commission or whatever, or a task force, it's the council is the "they."
Yes.
The council decides what the makeup's gonna be, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So, we've got, and I guess, maybe it's Valerie, I don't know who, but the objective, I guess, is again put out by "they" on the objective page, slide five?
Yes.
That is their, okay, thank you.
Correct. It is not some, no, and I like the clarity. Thank you, Counselor. This is not something that came from council. It's not something that came from staff. This is something that came from a group of citizens that Valerie's been working with. So, Counselor Lovelace could probably answer that.
Yeah. If you wanna, I can certainly answer that. And you're right. I mean, we knew, I mean, and we all know that it's basically up to the council. Basically, what this group did is research. You know, one of the things that after that last meeting that we had, a lot of people kinda wanted to keep involved and see where to go. And so, therefore, you know, in looking at other communities, there was a lot of information that was kinda brought together by different communities for discussion. And as I've had discussion, discussion with Aaron before, when you start comparing communities, you're, you really are in a lot of ways comparing apples and oranges because you can gra, gather information and gather numbers. But then you realize, oh, wait a minute, they have an ambulance service. Oh, wait a minute. You know, they have this, that, or whatever. So, there's just so many things out there and ways that different communities do different things that I think the reality was, is that no, this, you know, we have a pretty together public safety, you know, police and fire. I mean, we do. I mean, the support is there in our community for Warren and the fire. But it would be nice to have something that some other communities have, which is an ongoing committee that kind of specializes in these things and has, instead of regular meetings once a month, because that's the last thing, when we talked about it, we want to burden the chiefs with. But, you know, there are committees at Albany, they meet once every quarter. You know, they just have quarterly meetings, and it's just kind of an update. But you then have your people that are out there speaking in your community to help educate people as well as just the counselors. Because what has, what I've seen happening in my nine years is a lot of things become politicized. And by having somebody outside who can kind of gather and work as a spokesperson, it just makes it easier to disperse information. And so, you're right. As we went through this, we talked about, you know, "they," and "they" was the committee, the committee of people who came together to kinda talk about how to support our public safety moving forward. And then, you know, one of the things that I talked about is we have a tree committee, we have a parks committee, we have all these things. And yet, our number one job as a community is to keep the community safe. And so, it only seemed like a natural idea to put something together. So, we just looked to see what other communities had, and that's what we based it on. But we didn't mean in any way to override the importance of the camp, the council in making the decisions and forming the committee, if that helps. Joel?
And this wasn't discussed at the, at the meetings. I, I was there. I went to all the meetings. But in terms of effective leadership, effective organizations delegate down tasks. It's like the housing committee. I mean, the council doesn't, we even hired a housing staff to manage that program. We have options in public safety funding of raising the property tax rate, put in a fire district, whatever. If you don't have that delegation downwards from a decision-making body, you don't have, you don't get the buy-in of things maybe that the community really needs and that are willing to go out and facilitate that communication. And so, now, all of a sudden, the, the council decides, well, heck, we need a fire district. Well, the first thing you do is you run into a lot of opposition, and, and nobody's supporting it from the community. That ground base and delegation down is a sign of effective leadership. Without that, we can think, do what we wanna do and what's, what's appropriate. But our ability to implement that is extremely limited without that, without that citizen involvement. So, I, I think that's, that's a big part of it.
Rob?
So, Valerie, when you say other cities or communities have public safety advisory committees, I mean, I, I know of two that have essentially public safety oversight committees, but advisory committee, like what cities is that?
I, I think Albany has a commission, which we decided we didn't really wanna commission. I mean, in our discussion, that was not a recommendation that we had because we didn't wanna feel like we were usurping the way things were. Oregon City has a, a committee, advocacy for the police-fire. Medford has an oversight committee. I think maybe that's what Medford has. But Oregon City, I'm thinking Albany, I'm trying to think of who else off the top of my head. There was, there was numerous. I think Redmond had some sort of a committee. Those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head.
Rob?
So, I guess I'd, I'd actually like to look at those, those, one of them you just said was advocacy for police and fire. Well, that sounds like a political action group to me, which is what I don't really wanna get involved in, even though, if we're trying to be unbiased. But so, when we say objective, to advise city council on matters pertaining to funding, budgeting, facilities, strategic planning to enhance our safety of our community, I mean, on the surface, there's nothing there that council and our, our budget book wouldn't show us and know better or for, before anyone on our advisory committee would know. So, if I guess they wanted to, you know, advise council on other cities do it, that, that to me might make... that to me might make some sense. I mean, I, I always hope that we get that information from staff, but we, we don't get enough of it, in my opinion. But to advise the council on matters pertaining to funding, budgeting, et cetera, that makes no sense whatsoever, because we've already got whatever information they're going to have.
Well, and I will disagree with you on that, Rob. And I think it goes back to what you also said, is that we never get enough, because there's a lot out there. I've spent a lot of my time researching and trying to get information here and there or whatever, and you're right, there is a lot of information out there. Our staff, I mean, as a counselor, I look at it this way. You know, I have to know about the water treatment plant and all that's involved with that. I have to know about the injunction and housing and everything there is to know with that. I do depend upon the housing advisory committee. I do depend on those people to give me more information. And I guess in my nine years as a counselor, knowing, you know, my passion for public safety, there are people who will take the time to research it and do know more. There's plenty of people in our community that have worked in police departments and fire departments and things like that. It's no different than transportation. You know, there's so many more people in the community that know about that and have some experience in their lives working in that, that I think it's kind of a waste not to utilize that information. And I know that there's a lot of people that are passionate about it. I mean, take a look at our police citizen, the safety people that go through the academy. I mean, there are, I've talked to many people that have gone through that, that public safety academy and have just blown away about, you know, what we have on our community, what we have in our community, and they're interested in knowing how other communities do it. So I think my knowledge of trying to figure out how other communities do it, it's way beyond my capability. And yet, I've met so many people along the way who have worked in other cities, who have done things in other cities, and there are other opportunities available that we just don't know about. So I would just encourage us to have those people come together and help us as we move forward, because there's a lot of issues in public safety that we have dealt with and we will continue to deal with moving forward.
Rob?
Yeah, I guess slide five doesn't mention essentially anything, any of what you just said, as far as studying how it's done around the state, et cetera, et cetera. That's not what slide five says, but, you know, I could see getting more information from other cities around the state. I could see that could be beneficial for us. But that, again, that would have been more clear. You've clarified that, if in fact that is the goal of the committee. That's not what it says here. You know, my, my concern is that, oh, I shouldn't say my concern, but one of my concerns is that, you know, this becomes a, either an undercurrent or de facto political action committee, that it will essentially be pushing certain agendas away and away from other agendas. And, you know, we know that there are people who have spoken, who are very politically active, or even on a state level, and they've got, you know, large lobbies behind them to steer certain funding sources away from their industries specifically. And we all know what I'm talking about. So, you know, we have the danger here of this becoming a political action committee that has then been endorsed by the city council. And that is not really something that I personally could support, if in fact I could feel that this, and you know exactly who I'm talking about, Val. And so the, you know, if this is something that we're going to be getting information from in an unbiased way statewide, that's one thing. If it's going to be steering away from certain funding sources, because certain lobbies don't want us to go there, that isn't very fair to the rest of our constituents. So that's a concern I have.
Joel?
Well, I think we all share that concern, and I think that exists on all our committees, not just this one. When I look at the housing advisory committee and some of the participants there, we kind of have the same influence. And that's why you, the committee membership is important, and that's why that committee doesn't make decisions, is the council. Because, because that, that is almost inherent within a democracy, in a republic, that that happens, or doesn't happen, and that, and that's part of our job.
Well, I just have to disagree, Joel, because there's nobody who's, that I can think of particularly, that will say is on the Parks Committee, who's making a, their life work and their earning potential, having really anything to do with what kind of trees we're going to plant on the median on Washington Street, you know?
So the, so the Parks Committee could have a nonprofit such as the YMCA that has their own interest.
Okay.
The Housing Committee could have All Care that, that makes money.
So I was answering what you were saying.
Yeah.
So what, what we have here, and we know, we've got some very large lobbies that make a lot of money and some very, very wealthy people in town-
Mm-hmm.
-who enjoy supporting those lobbies and have actually, you know, will actually even hold that over our head. I don't see that really with our other committees. I, I see a, a certain, much more of a level of grassroots purity in some of our other committees. You can disagree with me. That's fine, but you're also not acknowledging big dollar interests. So, you know, and yes, our, our, the people that we appoint are important, and, I mean, when we look at the kind of leverage that many of the larger businesses have and their interest in funding control of this, of public safety, I think it, it far outweighs anything you're talking about on the other committees. So anyway, it's just to consider, Joel. You don't have to agree with it.
Gentlemen, okay, let's, um, we need to get back on track here with deciding, I guess, whether there's interest in pursuing an advisory committee. And it's gotten kind of weird here, because we don't have very many people in the room, right? So, do you have other questions for Valerie about, you know, her idea, the goal of this? Any ideas for how to make it better, if you want to pursue it? Joel?
Well, having participated in it, I got some ownership in it, which is okay. You need to recognize that, and so I got that filter. The proposed committee makeup is important. And so Valerie, as we look at that, and, and we look at what Rob was talking about, and we look at their goals, what factors went into committee makeup? And I know it was a rainstorming session, but there were several factors.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're, we basically had looked at some of the other committees. There were seven members. We figured that was a good number. I don't think that, you know, we were tied to that, but we just felt like business people, I mean, people who public safety really affects, I mean, as well as other people, two at-large people, we kind of felt that that kind of balanced it out. I mean, if there's other ideas that other people have, I don't think I'm necessarily or I'm opposed to those. It was just we kind of were looking at, okay, well, let's take a look at what we've researched and seen what we've seen in other communities. It doesn't have to be our community, but, you know, ultimately, I think we all know that it's the council's decision. It's, it's council. And I was just following up, as I said I would, you know, with, you know, some of the members in the community, and having been involved in both the B R A N E and the, and the chamber, and being out in the community and talking with the nonprofits. I mean, there's just a lot of people, I think, you know, that need to be represented. And so we came up with that number. But once, it's again, we know ultimately it is the council's decision as to how to do it. I think anytime you're going to have a, you can have somebody who has a special, I think a lot of people go onto a committee with their passion of what they want to push through, but I think what you're going to find when you're talking to seven, or even as we know with eight counselors, you know, you've got to convince eight people that what you have to say is important, and this is just an advisory. It's not an actual, if the committee doesn't make the decisions, the council makes the decisions. So it's just basically meant as a group of people out there to help facilitate between the public safety people there, there at the meetings. And like I said, we basically thought that quarterly meeting would be fine, just to say what's up, look at trends, what's going on in our community, and get the information out to the public. So, except ultimately, all the decisions are made by the council. I think everybody's aware of that.
I just wanted to clarify, so it's been listed on our agenda for a number of weeks as an advocacy, but I, I think that what you're proposing here, the advocacy was not the correct word. It should have always been an advisory committee. And so this isn't like a group that would be involved as a, a political action committee trying to pass any sort of funding. Okay, so I guess your charge, like if you were to have this group, what, you know, their role is to-
Basically meet, come together once a quarter with the statistics, just like we get the, the report. One of the things is, we get the, the report from the, as a public, but I never have time to look for trends and those sorts of things. I mean, they're just kind of talking about playing with that equipment and getting out that information and getting it out to the public, so public knows more about it, but not make any decisions. All decisions, any decision, just like every other advisory committee, if they wanted to make a motion to have something come to the council, they could make a motion to have something come to the council. But they would not make any decisions on their own.
And they would help the council set priorities when it comes to the public safety? Okay. Then, Aaron?
I see the conversation really struggling with this some degree, and I think, I think part of the, part of the issue is, it's not, not staff saying we need this advisory committee. It didn't originate from the council as a whole saying we need this, this group. It was a group of citizens that, that a couple of council members were listening to and working on when it came to our funding challenges when it comes to public safety. If you're going to be creating this, it would definitely be at the success of this group that you are very clear from a council level what its purpose is. I've seen advisory committees with a muddy purpose, and it just creates hostility, because it's like, why are we here? What are we doing? What's our purpose? What's our role? And they get frustrated. So, that's, that's an important piece. You've got a group of people that are highly energized and want to be engaged. And so, is there, what is council's true purpose for this group, I think really needs to be defined? And is it a committee? Is it a task force? Does it have one single purpose and it's got a timeframe associated with it? It, and that'll be determined by your purpose. Is it a group that we want to just spend some extra time on, time with from a public safety perspective? Staff would be more than willing to sit down with them quarterly or whatever. If they want a special, special, additional information, we'd be more than willing to do that. So it's, I don't know, it, it's, it is a little gray, and so we're willing to do whatever, but it, this is just in a little bit different spot than, than other, we've been in.
Vanessa?
I did want to ask that, if, Councilor Lovelace, if you, comparing the task force and the committee, it sounds like the recommendation is a committee, and I was curious for that, because I know that this is kind of born out of the, you know, permanent funding discussion from council. And so do you see the purpose being more limited in nature to that? Or is this, do you see more value in, in ongoing standing committee, even after, let's say, we fill the deficits that we have, or we solve the issues that we have? You see value in continuing that committee?
I do. And just maybe it's because my passion from the very beginning has been the safety of our community, because I do think that's the role of the city and its role. And so in my nine years, even though, like you said, we've, we're having more problem now than we've ever had, I, I just think having the continuity of a group kind of knowing that they're always, you know, kind of talking and working within the community is important, because the council turns over every two years. I mean, you're, you're constantly having turnover in a, in a, in a council. You know, having been on now for, what, nine years? I, I've gone through a lot of different councils. And public safety is kind of like one of the most important things that we've always had to deal with. And so I think it goes far beyond our, our, our crisis right now, because there's always been kind of a crisis, because that's such an important part of what our job is. So, I think part of what kind of in a lot of ways got us to this position is the fact that we're always trying to advocate as counselors, and then we turn over and it changes, and there's just, there's, there just needs to be some sort of consistency. And I think that a committee like this would bring a certain consistency that you don't necessarily see right now. And so that is why I would recommend it from a point of view of it's an ongoing thing, because like I said, I don't, they're not going to answer the questions, they're not going to solve the problem. I mean, obviously, the problem comes back to the council, but the more information you have out there, and the more people that you have involved with it, the better, the better the community feels, because everybody's hearing from different people. And so that's why I think it's important.
The interest that I have in something like this would be really the permanent funding, getting, narrowing that down. Do you see the possibility of a task force versus a committee having a really targeted mission statement for that purpose, that maybe we could get a, an answer sooner than later, especially with proposed quarterly meetings?
I think public safety is bigger than that. I mean, I know this sounds kind of crazy, but I think that ultimately I can see this committee kind of working and getting out and working with the county, I mean, I mean just people in, in general. I mean, some of our issues are so much bigger than just, just the stability. It's the stability of the police, it's the stability of the fire, it's the stability of the jail, it's the, the public defenders. It's, I mean, there's just, it's, public safety is such a huge thing in our community. And I think that sometimes the more involvement you have with regular people, it's, it's just a, it just gives a certain stability in the community that I think is, I think would be valuable.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I think I understand, Val, your point about continuity. To me, I think that, you know, the number one thing that, I mean, if we had a really good, we'll call it, permanent funding source, right now in our city, this wouldn't be on our di, this wouldn't be in front of us. We know that. So the number one concern was the funding source. And I think a task force might lend itself to that. I also think that the people that might be chosen for that task force are people that are willing to go out and look around the state at different options, and, you know, report back to council. I don't know that, you know, this list of potential members are necessarily going to be the people that are the best researchers and find different, different things around the state. Maybe they are, maybe they're not. But to me, a task force makes, a shorter-term task force makes more sense, I suppose, after, if, you know, if it ended and council saw a lot of, a lot of benefit there, I guess it could be turned into a, an advisory committee longer term. The thing that, right now, you know, for instance, and maybe a task force would point this out, or maybe an advisory committee would point this out, to me, the, the biggest concern that I have right now is the, our criminal justice system's efficiency. And there was one day last week or the week before in the, in the Courier, I mean, the police report, there must have been five in a row that were said, basically catch-and-release. And some of them actually seemed fairly major, and they were catch-and-release. So, you know, where, where do we have to go? Or who, and I'm not the person to answer this. Maybe a, a city attorney along with the DA's office, et cetera, can point to, what do we have to do to make our ordinances more efficient? What do we have to do to make our, our, our police department more efficient? I, I know it's got to be really frustrating to the cops to do their job and then have nothing to show for it the following day when the person gets released. So to me, that's actually something that I'd like to focus on, but, and that would be a, just a few, a small number of people could give us advice on that, I would hope. But, but I would like to see a task force, I, for sure, and maybe that would end up being an advisory committee in the long term. But my, my concern also is that it, it not be a political action committee, and that's, that is my big concern. And I think a task force is less likely to have that, at least initially, happen, and maybe give us some ideas about what other cities are doing around the state to solve their funding crisis.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I get it, and I, I agree, but that, I think if anything, it's just that in my time here, there's always something that needs to be looked at. I mean, we tried, you know, when you start looking at how many fire districts there are, and how many, and how they're growing, and, and, you know, all of that. But I, like I say, I don't see it as a one-shot thing. I, I, I can never see it as a one-shot thing, because things evolve. I mean, so that's, that's the purpose of having an ongoing committee, because task forces, you know, they can get, if it gives us some recommendations, but it's going to be an ongoing thing down the, down the road. It's not an easy answer, easy, oh, well, here, do this, this, and this, and you're going to fix it. That's, it's not that easy. And I cannot, I cannot tell you how important having the support of the people in the community, no matter what you do. You cannot get it done without the support of big community members moving forward. If you've, if you've got them working with you, then that's just like, it just totally compounds the effect that you have out in your community, because those people are able to talk to their buddies, their buddies talk to their buddies, their buddies talk to their buddies. So that's how it works. So that's how it works. And I kind of feel like in my time in council, I've been working kind of in this bubble, you know, shouting to all the same people. And it's because I have a, you know, I have a limited base like everybody else does, you know? I do. Our Courier has a limited base, our radio show has a limited base, everything has a limited base. And so if you've got a committee of people who are truly interested in it, no matter what comes up down the road, you know, they're going to help us along the way. And that's, that's why, like I said, especially as I move out of this position. I mean, it's kind of scary moving out of this position because I know how hard I fought for nine years for a certain amount of things, and I just feel like sometimes I'm in the same place I was when we began. And without somehow getting more public output, it's not going to change. And that's what I'm passionate about, is trying to get more people involved. And that's why I would prefer to have an advisory committee. But, you know, if council as a whole decides that the task force is what they want, I'm not opposed to that. I just, I just think we need to move forward with something.
Erin?
So appreciate everything that's been said here, and like Councilor Pell's concerned about being a committee that is an advocate for something that may not be in alignment with policy and Valerie's concerns about having that additional voice and community output. It's all good conversation. I think one of the additional struggles, as I mentioned, with regards to making sure you have clear purpose, in reading what was provided for the presentation and talking with Councilor Lovelace a little bit, it is a morphed type of purpose that I'm hearing from this. Because it's, part of it is, yeah, it's, part of it would be housed potentially in a city advisory committee or task force forum, but then there's a whole nother half of what I'm reading in on the purpose that I've seen in other communities where they are public safety advocacy groups that are separate from the city. They're their own nonprofits, sort of like the DMO is its own nonprofit in a way. And they advocate for, and they get information out on public safety issues, they help fundraise, they help get information out there, they help with the K-9 program, they help with, oh, what kind of equipment? Oh, you need this equipment, but the city can't afford it, we're going to try to get this for you. And there, that information exchange role also that's been discussed to some degree. So I think part of the struggle you're having is this, what's here in front of you today doesn't fit a mold. It's a little combination of public advocacy, city potential, you know, recommendations, ongoing information and exchange. So that's, I think, the struggle that I'm seeing.
I guess, is there interest in moving forward with the advisory committee and having, putting that on a business meeting and deciding to do an advocacy, excuse me, an advisory committee? You guys all want to think about it some more? I'm not, we only have five people here today, and I'm not sure that I've heard three people speak in support of any one direction. Rob, and then Joel.
So Valerie, I understand everything that you said in your last, your last piece, and that all sounds practical and valuable. It's also, it's not at all what was written on this page, and it's not at all the other half of, but I understand as far as ongoing communication for various issues, you know, something like that could be valuable. You know, I do hear that for that reason, for the ability to be a more effective tool for council to communicate. And I hear that.
Joel?
I'm okay with a task force also, as is Valerie. The other thing I thought of, and I'm not sure it's appropriate, you could also have a committee with a sunset date, and if it's not renewed by the council because it's not being effective and not serving council's needs, then it sunsets. Government is very good at forming committees, and they're not very good at sunsetting committees. And so, I mean, you can look at committees in Congress that have long outlived their purpose. So not that this committee would, because I think it should be ongoing if that's what we decide to do, but it wouldn't hurt to have it as a sunset, and then you ask the question, should they continue or not?
All right. Does somebody want to propose a specific plan of what you would like to see? Valerie?
Well, I think you should put it on a business meeting and let there be public, you know, just go for it there. I mean, I think, you know, we can sit there in Hemen Hall or whatever, but I think at this point in time, we just put it on a public meeting, go through the public process and see if the, you know, what comes of it. Because you're right, we don't have everybody here, so we can't, it's hard for, you know, the information to get out there.
And is your proposal for the advisory committee and not a task force related to the funding issue?
Well, my proposal is for an advisory committee, and if it changes on Wednesday night meeting, then it changes on a Wednesday night meeting. But I think at that point in time, we'll get public input and have a better feel for it.
Okay. Is there council interest in putting an ongoing public safety advisory committee to a council vote? Joel is saying yes, and Valerie's saying yes. That's two, so. All right, we've got interest in doing that, so we'll put the advisory committee on the business meeting. Erin?
Mayor, oh, go ahead.
So would it, I suppose it could change on that Wednesday night. Is this the number of members? Is this etched in stone? What is, you know, the proposed committee member makeup?
At this point, yes. Nobody has discussed anything further. Did you have a suggestion?
I don't. I'm not sure if I understand the distinction between chamber and business because it seems like they're one and the same, but I'm not sure why they need, why we need two of them. But that's the only one that really jumps out at me as being kind of superfluous.
I was just wanting to make clear if this is truly going to a business meeting, we're going to need to write it up and do, you know, the bylaws and that kind of thing. It'll all be adopted. I'm going to do it based on the information that has been presented today from a purpose perspective and a membership makeup perspective, and that will be in the packet unless you want us to try to work it some other way.
That's the only thing that's been proposed at this point. Vanessa?
I did want to share input on why I didn't support putting the advisory committee to a vote. I think I would support the course of creating a task force. I think that the committee, although I appreciate the desire to have more of a holistic look at our situation, I think that it lacks the urgency that we're facing. I think a task force conveys more of that urgency of the council. I would like to see the council advising the task force of where we would like to be, and hopefully that task force creating some kind of roadmap or outlining some type of recommended strategies for us to get there, maybe varying level of service options, kind of different outcomes for what the council would desire. I think a committee meeting quarterly, I fear that it may be too open-ended depending on, you know, just depending on what we've seen today in the presentation, and I don't think it would get us the answers that we're really seeking in terms of the permanent funding and the deficits that we face in all three of the divisions for our public safety. So I just fear that it wouldn't get us the answers as quickly as we want or as we need, I should say. Additionally, I'm sorry, I do have one more thing. Councilor Lovelace had mentioned issues, and Councilor Pell mentioned issues with the jail and, you know, county partners. So I think that maybe even the makeup might, we might benefit from having a county member on there, and I don't know if that should be county government or a jail representative or somebody out of the DA's office, but that might also help as well, provide some insight.
I'm just saying, I don't oppose that at all, but I think it's just time for a discussion. We could hash around, hash around, hash around, but I think if a proposal is brought forth at a meeting, you know, we'll have the time to look at it, question it, change it at a meeting. And, you know, I guess that's my purpose for moving forward with what we have, but I'm not against those ideas at all.
Okay, yeah, Erin, I think the direction right now is just to draft something up based on the advisory committee as presented here today, and we'll see where council goes with that. All right, second quarter work plan.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I have the privilege of providing this strategic plan, work plan update for the second quarter. As you know, we have a robust program when it comes to receiving information, gathering information, making decisions on developing your strategic plan, and then ultimately the work plan, which then the budget follows. We have smart goals that are in the work plan that's in front of you that helps us track our progress and our successes. We have five main goals. That's enhance community safety, provide cooperative shared leadership involving council staff in the community, encourage economic opportunities, facilitate sustainable manageable growth, maintain and operate and expand our infrastructure to meet community needs. Those five goals are supported by 15 different objectives in your work plan, and then also 22 actions help support those 15 objectives. I'm going to go through and highlight some of what is in the work plan in front of you and some of our major accomplishments for the second quarter. Under maintain necessary public safety infrastructure, we've got action one, stabilize funding for police and fire services. Public safety utility was implemented June 1, 2024. That was a big policy decision by council, and that was not done in a vacuum. That was done over multiple public meetings and information out to the public and to staff to where council made an informed decision to implement a utility fee. We're also having discussions with regards to Hillcrest Fire Station and that project. We've provided council with some additional information when it comes to calls and an analysis of our calls coming out of Hillcrest. And then council's also asked us to look into that a little further, which will provide you some additional information as we continue to make progress on where to go with Hillcrest Fire Station. Under objective three, under enhance community safety, Posture Grants Pass to be a leader in addressing homelessness, mental health, drug addiction, and other related issues. Our action one, explore opportunity for the city to bolster mental health and drug addiction services for the unhoused. We have our police department who's continuing to partnership with Adapt Integrated Healthcare, and we continue to dispatch recovery mentors to drug overdoses in the city. The police department is also working with several local partners to promote and support a drug deflection program, which is extremely important to deflect people and get them into an opportunity where they can get sober and screen for services instead of arrest.
Erin, I have a question on that one.
Yeah.
That last bullet, is that in anticipation of the September 1st Measure 110 legislative changes?
That's, that's part of, that's part of that response, yes, and that's just part of our, just trying to provide good services to our unhoused individuals.
Sure. Have you identified partners in that nonprofit partners, whether that be the Sobering Center or Options, or what that might look like?
That's a terrific question, Councilor. I appreciate it, and the answer is yes. We've been working together with our Lipsec partners, our local public safety council, terrific group of county and city representation. Our deflection program right now looks like we will deflect people through our Sobering Center in anticipation of a case screening that can divert that individual into the correct course of action for their particular concerns.
Continuing along that action, explore opportunities for the city to bolster mental health and drug addiction services for the unhoused. And we have with, we're partnered with Options for Southern Oregon to continue to have great relations. We have an Options case manager that's still housed with the police department that provides those outreach services and activities, and that's a program that's going very well. Action two, work with state and local partners to establish homeless shelter sites. This is under enhance community safety. On May 1st, city council did approve a special use permit for Mint, our program that we have here in town, to shelter up to 15 individuals at 218 Rutherford Highway. And that is something that is new to our community that we're looking forward to having Action two continued, work with state and local partners to establish homeless shelter sites, On Track Emergency Lodging outpatient clinic at 688 and 690 Rogue River Highway, which received a special use permit from the city on the first quarter, submitted all the permits, provided you with an update, I think, last week on that progress. And so it's going well. They've learned a lot in Medford, and they're going to take what they've learned in Medford, and they're going to initiate it here in Grants Pass. In August, the city did host a roundtable meeting with local nonprofits and social service providers, and we will be holding that to gauge your current needs and levels of interest, and the mayor has taken the lead on that. Action one, implementation actions. In the second quarter, we gained 163 Facebook followers, and this is for developing a community communication strategy. We've upped our followers to 7,300, which is excellent. That's up from, that's up, I'm sorry, we've upped it to 8,500, which is up from 73 last year. Our website is currently being updated, so every few years we have an opportunity to update our website. So we're going to make it look cleaner, make it more easily accessible for individuals to receive information. Under develop and implement, communication strategy continued, implementation actions. As part of the new housing incentive and initiation marketing plan, the Housing Advisory Committee did partner with the city, and we hosted a home building update and resource event, May 16th, that went very well. Under encourage economic opportunities, objective one, facilitate environment to encourage business prosperity and economic opportunities. Action one, designate a portion of the transient lodging taxes to fund tourism-related projects. The economic development staff did create an online fillable forum for the sustainable tourism grant, and those have been opened during our cycle starting July 1. Under enhance central business district, create a permanent plaza downtown. There's been a lot of work associated with that. There's been a couple of council workshops, so you're relatively aware of what's going on there. We're currently, right now, going through and working on that. We estimate that we will be able to bring something back to you in September to give you an update on the progress of the permanent plaza for the downtown area. Under facilitate sustainable manageable growth, objective one, action one, increase available buildable lands inventory. And there's a lot going on here. Staff held several more meetings in the second quarter with our consultant. A draft alternative analysis for urban growth boundary inclusion and exclusion opportunities are available. As you may recall, this is an opportunity where we can take urban growth boundary properties that may not be useful at this time to develop and switch that for some properties that are maybe in our urban reserve so we can get additional buildable lands available in our inventory. Subconsultant Johnson Economics is scheduled to complete a market analysis of the potential inclusion lands in July. Continuing, increase available lands, buildable lands inventory. Allen Creek Road Neighborhood Outreach Program is in place. We've done some property owner outreach for annexation and rezone opportunities in the Allen Creek area. They'll provide an opportunity for a number of acres of property that's currently zoned in county to go to city zoning, which will increase the density opportunities in that Continuing, develop programs which incentivize increased density development. Staff presented a draft middle housing infill development program to the Housing Advisory Committee in July. The goal of the program is multifold, to develop infill lots that utilize existing infrastructure. One of the key things about that is, one, we don't have a lot of buildable land. We're up against a number of hillsides and steep slopes. So what this does is it provides an opportunity for us to incentivize infill, which is also cheaper in the long run to cities because the infrastructure is already in place. We're not having to run water and sewer and that kind of, we're not having to also expand our services for police and fire. So increasing infill density is actually a very cost-effective way in doing something like that. Continuing on this action, develop programs which increase density development. Staff began work on amendment of Article 12 of the Development Code, which will increase the height capability of some of our development. Of course, the higher and the more stories you can go, the more denser you are per square foot, so that's another positive, increasing density levels. Under encourage environment to provide for affordable housing, action one, support and encourage the development of 225 units per year for the city of Grants Pass. There's a couple of notes here. The housing- a couple of notes here. The Housing Opportunity Grant Review Committee will be making a recommendation to grant fund two applications that are coming forward, actually, to your meeting here coming up on Wednesday. There's been some work that you've done also in the past few weeks when it comes to providing funds and resources to help meet our 225 unit goal. Staff is also working with the awardee of the Allenwood Surplus Property RFI to complete a city-led rezone of the three parcels from R18 to R12. What this will really do is not only will our land that we have in Allenwood, which you've designated as housing, will be upzoned to a higher density, but the neighboring, there's some neighboring properties that want to do the same, which will be a multiplying factor when it comes to providing density levels in that area. Continuing, support and encourage the development of 225 homes. Staff prepared an RFP for round four of the ARPA dollars, and we've been awarding those dollars, and they've been very successful. One of the great programs that we allocated quite a bit of money for, and it's all going to be used up. So I think it was a very successful program, and it was very smart on council's part from a policy level to put aside dollars like that to incentivize the development, because it's definitely worked. Maybe something we want to try to look at, finding resources in the future to do the same thing, which we can maybe sometimes do with, like, RCET program or something along those lines. Of course, develop spalding. That's one of our employment land properties, and when it's coming to industrial, design is underway to provide sewer services in the spalding area, and we're looking at trying to shorten our timeframe in order to get those sites more ready. Ensure bicycle and pedestrian path needs are met. Identify opportunities to improve safety and fluidity of multimodal facilities. There's two little projects we wanted to mention, Sixth and Seventh Street, which is a state project, but it has a definite impact on the city, is going well. And then also, the city is participating in the Greenway Corridor Study, which you probably heard a lot of. That Greenway has the potential of linking us to pass Medford. And so it's a great opportunity for recreational bike and ped opportunity.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
And maybe, when, that is coming up, I think this next, in the next week or two, and I was wondering when exactly, if you know the date, because I wanted to make sure that it got out to our advisory committees, both the bike and ped and the parks. Do you have, you don't know it off top? Okay.
It's the 29th.
It is the 29th. Okay, great, great. Thank you. And that's here at City Hall, correct? Okay. Six, is it 5:30? Okay, all right. I'll look it up. Thank you. I tried to find it.
Under objective three, ensure park infrastructure needs are met. Action two, infrastructure repairs and improvement. We've got a list of a number of things that we've been working on, and they've all gone fairly well. We've done a lot of improvements to our parks. This has just continued. New playground equipment, designation of Agnew Little Field approval, Gilbert Creek restroom repairs. We have a new bike repair station installed at Lovelace Park, so that's nice, which is also called the B Street Jumps area.
Erin, I have a question on the skate park.
Yeah.
How did that end up?
Yeah, we, I'm not sure if I sent an email out yet to Mayor Council, but I will. We just recently met with the contractor, and we sat down with them, reviewed the scope of work for the skate park itself. And it was found by city staff and the contractor that the scope of work and the work that was done was complimentary to the scope of work, and it was correct and did represent the scope of work appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Under enhance opportunities to promote character and community spirit, acquire Main Street certification. This is a great program. Very excited about this opportunity as it harnesses and tries to direct a lot of energy in the downtown area for them to be a part of their future destiny. And coming up with a Main Street certification program. The committee did recently meet in June and discuss some issues, including trying to maybe bring back the Back to the 50s event downtown, which would be exciting. And then my final slide is infrastructure implementation. We did a number of arborade plantings along Allen Creek Trail. We have 30 trees planted in the downtown corridor. We sent out letters to 17 additional individuals looking at expanding this Sixth Street tree planting program to another 17 locations. And with that, that concludes my report. Although I do want to state, I want to thank council for their policy direction. I want to thank a great, highly-trained professional staff and the community. In order to get these accomplishments where they are today, it took all three groups to make that happen.
Thank you, Erin. Council, do you have any questions? Kind of cut out our questions along the way. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Any discussion on this? Rob?
I just don't, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to mention this. I did mention it in an email the other day, and I talked to Jason about it, maybe a month or two ago, about signage on the loos. And, I mean, for people that are not from Oregon, they go by one of those loos, there's no possible way they would know it's a bathroom. So to have a sign on top that says "public restroom" I think would really be beneficial to everybody. And have a sign inside that says where the, that there's a hand washing station on the outside, because they'd have no way of knowing unless they walked in from that hand washing side. So, the Portland Loos Company should have offered those to us, or should have designed them that way. But in the meantime, those loos don't look like restrooms to most people. So, I'm hoping that we could take the little bit of action it would need to correct that.
The last time I checked, the one that's actually across the street from your shop, it's probably been a month or so ago, but it did have a sign inside the door that said that the hand washing station was around to the side. Yeah. You know, might get torn down from time to time, I'm not sure. But I agree with your overall assessment about the restrooms. It's not really obvious, you know, from a little bit of a distance that there are restrooms. Brad, did you have something you were going to say?
Well, I was just going to say that the downtown maintenance facilities is under CD, actually. So I have talked to Josh about that. We'll try to make that a little more legible. I hear what you're saying, Councilor. I believe that embedded into the permanent structure at the top, it actually does say "public restroom," but it's gray, so it matches the color, so it's not as obvious. But they do come out of the manufacturer with stating "public restroom" right on, right, you know, kind of engraved.
But that's only if you're facing that side also, if I'm not mistaken. So if you're coming from the other direction.
Correct.
It just looks like some electrical substation or something, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get some better signage going on that.
Since you have the mic there, do you know when the Welcome Center is going to be open with those restrooms?
Jason actually has that one.
Okay.
So, the building probably September. The restroom, the toilets have been delayed. They got ordered a little bit late, but they were a very long lead item. And they've had some either manufacturing difficulties, but the toilets aren't going to ship. So we may be trying to work with planning to close out the project for the Welcome Center itself, and then take out a second permit to be able to finish the toilets at a later date, the three on the outside. Because of the fixtures, the heavy-duty fixtures will not be ready in time to open it. And we were hoping to get it done and closed up so that Brad and his team could move in there without having to pay additional rent at the off-site location.
Okay. Sounds like another month, anyway, for the Welcome Center. Cool. Vanessa?
I was hoping to receive a memo on the actualized revenue for the utility fee once that third cycle has ended, if we could see what it's actually bringing in, if there's any increased delinquencies with payments, maybe any general feedback that's been received from the community. And then I also wanted to learn more about what that actualized revenue has been able to cover. I know that that was kind of a changing target when we talked about that, so just what that really looks like now, rather than just proposals.
Anything else on the work plan? No? Okay. We had a quick agenda review here. We do have a meeting this Wednesday night, so we have a couple of public hearings. One is a second amendment, excuse me, a second reading on a text amendment to the Article 28 of the Development Code. So that actually won't really be a hearing that night, it's a second reading. Then we have a public hearing on the Agnes RV Park Comprehensive Plan Map and Zone Map Amendment. Then our council action items and ordinance regarding feral cats, a resolution that would, a couple of different ones, approve Housing Opportunity Fund grants, a resolution for an ARPA public infrastructure grant, a couple of URA items. Is that the way this is written? A resolution that would award, oh, I don't know how they say this, LOBL LLC, Urban Renewal Building Rehabilitation Restoration Grant. We're considering a resolution to purchase the Washington Avenue property. We have a resolution that would award Cynthia and Peter Hewitt a matching Urban Renewal Agency grant. We have a resolution to consider the Urban, excuse me, Utility Relief Program Authorization, a resolution for the RV Workforce Consortium Mayor Representation. That's the Rogue Valley Workforce Consortium, not an RV park in that case. A resolution for a local agency agreement with ODOT for flexible service maintenance, a resolution regarding the re-roofing of City Hall, a scope change, motions that would approve the May financial report, the January through March financial report, the April financial report, the motion to acknowledge the monthly investment report, a motion to approve the Article 28 findings of fact. And then we're adding in a resolution for changing those locations for the homeless campsites. So we need to make that change to the Wednesday's agenda. And then we won't have another workshop because of Labor Day, so our next meeting is scheduled for September 4. Any questions, comments? Rob?
On the re-roof scope change, could someone collaborate on that?
It was a very small change order. We actually increased the scope of work for the architect working on the re-roof project, and added a redesign on the railings upstairs, which are falling apart, so that we can, at the same time, hopefully do the re-roof project and replace the handrails on the second floor.
Erin?
I don't see on this, on the meeting resolution, but there is something that was added late last week, and it must not have been updated here. But there should be a resolution also for purchasing I Street, 601 I Street.
Okay.
That will also be on there.
So, I Street, and then, yeah, those homeless sites will be outside of the packet that we have. Anything further for the moment? All right. No executive session planned today, so how about a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second by Valerie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See you Wednesday night.